All right, that's reconvened from closed session and we'll start the next item. And that is, forgive me, report out from closed session. And that is, there were no actions taken in their closed session. The X item is public comment. At this time, anyone wishing to speak in public forum has the right to do so. And just for sake of keeping our meetings a little shorter, we're going to limit to three minutes as far as protocol and basically to have a civil discourse. Thank you.
It's dropping. The A, the IT guy or the AV guy? Can you fix that? It doesn't. It's not adjustable. So please don't start the clock yet.
Yeah.
Let's get a chance to eat dinner.
Dave, just bring the whole tub off. May I have a joint?
Right.
Okay. As everyone seated at the table there knows, there was a board meeting on June 15th. And there are minutes of that board meeting. And the minutes are item, it's in the consent calendar and it's item 7.3, minutes of the meeting. I read the minutes. And, you know, I think the, we deserve to have minutes that reflect reality. At least somewhat closely reflect reality. The minutes that we have here tonight regarding that meeting don't reflect reality even closely, at all, not at all. As the five of school board members will remember, we had a lot of discontent, a lot of teachers here speaking about dysfunction here at the school district. And the ire of the district, of the teachers and the educators was against the superintendent. That's not my opinion, that's just factual. And yet, the minutes for the meeting, written, I understand, by the superintendent himself, don't reflect that at all. As a matter of fact, if you read the minutes, there's one sentence and it says nothing at all about any educators or employees here at the district having anything to say about any criticism towards, against the superintendent. So it's a, it's a great hand washing, a hand wringing. And I don't think the people of Emeryville are well-served by that. And I think that we should have minutes reflect what really happened. And it's, it's embarrassing, the minutes, but it's also very telling because I think it shows that the superintendent is not willing to be accountable. And I think he made that clear, you know, he's made that clear over the years, but especially made that clear on the 15th when he washed his hands and said that he's trying as hard as he can or whatever, some such innocuous statement as that. But the minutes are the final sort of coup d'acra in seeking to avoid accountability. So I'm not interested in having a superintendent that's not accountable to the people. So I think it's incumbent upon the five of you to bring up item 7.3, I think is what it is, I just said, the minutes. Pull that item and discuss it. Should we be a school district that has an accountability and have the minutes reflect reality or should we be just, you know, full fantasy? And so I challenge, one of the five of you, here now, please pull item 7.3. Let's have a discussion about the minutes that were written about that epic meeting of June 15th. I challenge one of the five of you right now, right here, right now.
I agree with Brian. And during this whole business about Mr. Rubio taking the DVD home with him so that he could actually improve his effort to, to create accurate detailed minutes, they should be even more than, you know, better than, than usual. So yeah, the two sentences or whatever, really inadequate, did not accurately reflect what happened. I watched the video. I frankly was shocked and troubled and saddened by what I heard. And what was even more disturbing to me was that nobody on the board, with the exception of Brenda Collins, addressed the teacher's concerns. I mean, it was shocking. They are standing there telling you that there is a culture of racism and inequity and lack of support, that veteran teachers that have devoted years and years of their careers to this school district are leaving, and you all just sat there. And I was really disturbed, so, for the record. And like Brenda said at the time, it's time to take action. You can sit and listen and listen and listen, but if you don't do anything, you're ineffective and you're not serving the district. So I hope that in the future that you take what they said seriously and I hope you do something about it. And I, I think it all starts, of course, with Mr. Rubio because he's the leader of the district, he sets the tone. And there is clearly a serious, serious issue, much more serious than I even imagined. So yeah, I would like the, the minutes to really reflect what was said. And I also want to say that in my back and forth about not getting the DVD of the minutes when I wanted, or of the meeting, when I wanted them, Mr. Rubio said that, or his lawyer, the district's lawyer, said that the district goes above and beyond in terms of transparency, which is, you know, it's laughable, especially under these circumstances where we get one or two sentences about what happened at that meeting. So start to think about the impact of what's, you know, on students, of what's happening. Okay, also, I sent an email this morning to all the board members, Mr. Rubio, Lisa Tamory, I copied the city council. It has to do with the Measure J audits that are required by law. And shockingly, I was, I was told by Lisa, as per Mr. Rubio, that those audits actually exist. And so it's really curious that after all these conversations about wanting to do an audit, that this never came up. Were you keeping it a secret? Did the board not know that they existed? Did Rubio, Mr. Rubio not know or did he decide not to share that information? I mean, it's really valuable information. I'd also like to know how you differentiate these audits that exist with this audit of the, of the ECO that we're, you know, under consideration by the board right now. What's the difference?
You're out of time.
So I want to see those audits. I'm coming to pick them up tomorrow. Can't wait to see them.
Any additional public comment? All right. With that being said, we'll move on to the next item. And that's starting out with the ETA report.
Mark Davis, President of ETA. I'm speaking to you tonight because of concern for our teachers. And before I begin, I'll remind us that as the new year begins, August 17th, I believe, we undergo a two-day training, an equity training with Ken Singleton, who the district, Dr. Rubio has put great emphasis on its value and need. So with that in mind, please consider the following. At the June 15th board meeting, teachers and principal Lang spoke their truths and I went outside to thank all of them for having done so. It was at that point that my attention was directed at a sign sitting out here. It said, "Interviews," an arrow pointed to the administration building. As I went over, I discovered that there were two first-year teachers, both white, interviewing teachers to be hired. And I thought to myself, what's wrong with this picture? We've been talking about equity. We've paid money to have Singleton here and yet this is the result that we're seeing. I'm not criticizing those two teachers because I feel that they have been put in a rough situation. They're not tenured. They have spoken to me, or one of them has, that they feel like between a rock and a hard place. They know that there are veteran teachers who feel some animosity because they feel stepped over or ignored, okay? But it goes on. It needs to change and it needs to change now. This is an easy fix, real easy, and one that ETA is willing to be part of the fix. Dr. Rubio did promise teachers a diverse interview committee. And he did ask some, some apparently didn't show, I want to be fair. He did provide a diverse committee when the principals were selected. But yet, there have been these new teachers interviewing, previewing, kind of at a surprise to most of the staff because we knew nothing about it. The problem with this type of committee is that you have, like you saw the people that talked to you, so many years of institutional history and experience that is just not being utilized. People that have been committed to this district, who have stayed here 10, 15, 20 years through good times and bad, but they're here, they're committed, and they feel like they have been This experience really flies in the face of the equity goals that this district has so passionately spoken of. So my question is, so how serious is this district about equity? Is it a political football, a resume builder, or is it something that we really want to take seriously and gain some achievement here? If it's the latter, then things need to change and we need to be aware and not take this so personally and take it as, okay, this is a problem that needs repairing and it needs repairing now. So, in the last 20 years, I have had eight superintendents, I've had at least 12 principals, I couldn't count them all. And it made me realize that in those 20 years, I worked with the same faces in the classroom, many of the same faces. People are here. They know the families, they know the students, they know the officials that work in this city. Our veteran teachers have proven themselves. The fallout of this year's teachers resignations and retirements, instead of building community, we've driven a wedge and it needs to be fixed again. So I'm proposing this. I'm proposing that we create two committees, two standing committees. One made up of a diverse group of elementary teachers, one, a diverse group of high school teachers who will be there throughout the year to interview people seeking employment in this district. ETA is happy to make sure that those committees are filled. At the end of the year, if they need juggling through people leaving, whatever, we're happy to make it happen. But it needs to happen. I hope that we are all committed to unity, to trust, to transparency. This is the way you make it happen. ETA is trying. We are funding right now a meet and greet for all the new teachers that are coming in and the veteran teachers that are remaining. That'll take place at an Oakland A's ballgame with a dinner or what have you, as an initial step to try to bring some kind of unity. And, but we really can't have this, any policies or any practices that disrupt that chemistry because everybody that works in this building, they depend on each other. So we've got to, we have to make that effort. The other thing, this was, I was just looking at the agenda and this has been something that's bothered me for a long time, so why not? Being a teacher, I get to assign homework and I'm going to challenge the board right now to do some homework. Okay, here it is. I don't know when you meet again after tonight, in the fall, summer? But I would like you to all read the district goals and write down what you think they mean. And then eventually get to compare with each other. Because there's something about education, probably not unique to this district, but we get some lofty goals that really get kind of vague. So my question is, how do you measure them, right? And who does? Are they measurable? Can they be measurable? But just take a minute, have some fun, go back to school, all right? I promise, I won't fail anybody. So that's it. It's an easy fix. I hope you take this as positive criticism, as a way to repair. There is damage here, to ignore it would be a crime. There are problems. It needs to be fixed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. At this time, we'll have a CSEA report. Since there is no representative, we'll move on to the student representative report.
Yeah. Okay, now it's on. Okay, school is over, so there's not really much going on except summer school that's hosted by Mr. Green and Mr. Bartholomew on Odyssey Ware and Mr. Perez's summer bridge program introducing incoming eighth graders that are now new freshmen. Yeah, they're basically being prepared for what to expect in high school and being taught STEM practices, so science, math, technology, and engineering. Yeah, that's all that's going on.
Okay, at this time, superintendent's report.
Whoops, sorry guys. Good evening. I just want to update the board that we have been rigorously continuing our hiring process, that, in part that Mr. Davis was talking about. And, Mr. Davis, I hope you and I can follow up and get together and talk about some of your perceptions because I'd be happy to follow up with you and talk, give you some more information. We have, turns out, interviewed 198 people since February for a small handful of positions and it's, it's been hard, hard work to find the best people we can find. So we're endeavoring, as usual, to do that. In terms of other updates, at this time of year, Dr. Kell and a few teachers are away at some training for math, there's some teachers out of state right now. And we have been working hard to review and wrap up our budget work with the great work of Doris Sue and our LCAP, so, and that's for later tonight. That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Rubio. Finally, the board president's report, I'm going to go ahead and pass on that tonight and we'll move on to the consent calendar, which is item 7.1, 2, 3, and that should be it for those. Would anybody like to pull any of those items from the consent calendar?
I'd like to pull personnel items, actions.
Okay. Any others?
And I'd like to pull the minutes.
All right, which one?
The minutes.
All right, that's, we'll pull 7.2 and 7.3. If that's the case, do I have a motion for accepting, or for item 7.1?
I'll make a motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Member Ball?
Yes.
Member Solis?
Yes.
Member Collins?
Yes.
Member Hinch?
Yeah.
Member Langner?
Yes.
President Marion?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Item, discuss for item 7.2.
And, good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, I would like to introduce to you the new staff member that we're asking your approval, and that is Ms. Rosie Audette. Ms. Audette is being hired as a special education teacher in the district and she has worked in special education for over 10 years in both urban and suburban districts. In addition to teaching, Rosie has worked with the Loyola Marymount University as a university supervisor, providing support to first-year teachers working in special education.
All right.
Hello. My name's Rosie. I've been working with Dr. Steele to try and come up with a position that will, it's kind of a district-wide philosophy about inclusion, trying to get our kids with special needs included in general education. I've done that for the last 10 years and that included training teachers on how to modify curriculum, how to work on behavior supports, training paraprofessionals to really emphasize their talents and get all of our students with special needs as included as possible. And I look forward to an opportunity to do that for Emeryville. I know there's a couple of kids who have been out in private, or, you know, not Emeryville schools who we'd like to bring back and really support their transition back into the district near their families and really make sure that all teachers are supported in any way that they need. So that's the role that I help, hope, hope to serve for you guys, so, thank you.
Welcome. Welcome aboard.
Yes, welcome.
Any other questions? If that's the case, then do I hear a motion for item 7.? I'm sorry.
I actually, I'd like to ask a question about resignations. It used to be that the names were listed up until the past few packets and now there's just a position number listed? And I'm, I'm wondering about that change.
Ms. Row, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank. Was it something I decided to do, which is fair, it's fine to say if it is.
In the past, you're correct, the names have been posted and it was a recent change to only do the position numbers.
Was that, I, my assumption would be, and maybe I made that decision, I recall, was it to be more respectful of the people going out and not be so public about?
That, that sounds like, that sounds like part of the conversation, yes.
Okay, okay.
I, I'm not actually comfortable with that. I feel like other districts, if I look at throughout the other districts, you can see their agendas, you can see their personnel items, and it's not the norm to, to not list their names and it's, it's, I find it odd that we only list a position number and that we've only recently started to do that. I would like to consider a change.
I, I'll take your individual recommendation under consideration, but unless the board wants to make that a policy, it's a staff decision, it's all, but I'll look at other districts and see what they're doing because I'm, I don't know, so I'll, I'll look around.
Yeah. I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to add something to that. I mean, going back to what Member Hinch said, as far as previously was done, I think, yeah, it was a surprise to me too as well. So I would, would like to see that as, come back as a future board item and then resume so the next go-around, we, we don't have this nebulous position being lost.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to determine what you want to do. It's not a board policy, it's really a district practice, so, and I didn't recall that we changed it. So my intent probably was to be respectful, some people were asked to leave and we tried to be respectful about resignations and listing names. So let me, I'll look at some other districts and see what they're doing, see what the common practice is in our neighboring districts and, and I'll be glad to, maybe I could talk to you and another board member and vice president about it and tell you what I find.
All right.
I, I did look at other districts and they do list names and I do feel that it's appropriate if somebody specifically asks not to have their name, but I don't feel that there's any shame with resigning, I don't know. I did look at several other districts, local districts, and it is not the norm to not list their name.
Okay, I, I heard you say that earlier and I'll take a look as well. I appreciate you letting me know.
Sorry if you covered this earlier, but this, this resignation that we see here, is that part of the eight or is it additional, in addition to the eight?
I believe that's an addition. That was, that was a later notice to us.
Okay, thank you.
For a, well, yes.
Okay, I appreciate that because you know, when it comes to consent items, you don't legally have to grant citizens the capacity to speak and so the fact you're allowing it is appreciated. I listened to, I didn't know anything about this item until just now I listened closely. And so there's a change now in how teacher resignations are being recorded. And, and so Mr. Rubio, the superintendent, said he's leaving, you know, we're now, the change means we're leaving the names of teachers and educators off, off the public record so people like me can't see it, can't see that. And he says he's doing it out of respect to these educators and teachers. But so, but the question though is, why now? I mean, I, forgive me for being a little conspiratorially minded, but I, I suppose I don't have to remind the five of you, we're in the midst of this mass teacher exodus that's been building over the years. We are now, as I've reported, by far the worst district of any district in the entire Bay Area vis-à-vis teacher resignations. And so now, in the midst of that comes this change. And now Mr. Rubio is suddenly concerned about being respectful to teachers whereas before, apparently he wasn't concerned about being respectful of teachers. I just want to say, I don't believe that, frankly. I think the whole thing is dubious. You know, when you're asking to change something to make something a little less transparent in the midst of this crisis, in the midst of people like me telling parents and the citizens about it, you know, I smell, I smell something rotten and I don't, the excuse given, the respectful thing, doesn't compute because, again, why now? Why wouldn't you have been wanting to be respectful of the educators, say, a year ago? Back then, apparently it was fine to release their names, suddenly now, no. And like I said, at, coming at this time, it makes me think that, you know, there's something rotten here. And I, I don't think you should go have this change unless some compelling reason other than, you know, this, this respectful sort of mumbo jumbo is put to rest. I mean, I, I just think we should... I mean, I just think we should, this is not the time to be doing this. We need to be increasing transparency right now, not decreasing it. Thank you.
Yeah, so I agree with Brian. So, going back to the district, school district's memo about how the district goes above and beyond when it comes to transparency and upholding the Brown Act, and also, you know, I want to say that, as far as I understand it, Mr. Rubio serves at the, at the pleasure of the board. And so, you have two board members who have just asked you to seriously consider putting the names, the list of names, so, the answer to that, I think, would be okay, because you're serving at the pleasure of the board, not, I will check out what neighboring cities do. Out of respect for Barbara, Board Member Barbara Inch, she said she'd already done that, and other districts list the names of people who resigned. So, I am troubled by this sort of pushback that the board appears to be getting frequently when they ask you to do something.
Let me just add something for clarification, just so the public knows and they're clear about this. I'm happy to look at it, guys, I didn't even remember making the change, but, so, conspiracy theories aside, just as a reminder to everyone, I serve at the pleasure of the entire board as a group, not to anyone or two individual members. So, when the entire group of five directs me, that's how I move. I just want to make sure that's clear to everybody.
Thank you.
Or, excuse me, three or more, excuse me.
Good evening, everyone. Just a thought, one of the things I would be interested in as an educator is what grades, where are the teachers leaving, what grades, what subject matter, and things like that, so even a fuller picture for me, because I think that's important. I would be particularly concerned at the younger ones, younger grades. The whole, the whole point particularly for younger children, well, all of the children here, it's a small district, it should be very relational. If we want children to learn, they have to learn in a meaningful context, and that has to be relationship-based. So, trying to, to look at how best to, to work and keep our teachers, I think if we can see, is there clustering, is there certain things happening, is it certain groups of teachers living, leaving, we need to be able to see that. It would be most helpful. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, I don't think there's any other, are there any other comments from the board?
Don't have a question. Are we talking about what we want the policy to be now? Is that the right time?
No, not at this time. I suggest we do it at a future board meeting.
So, it's going to be a future agenda item to talk about whether we include?
If it needs to be, guys. So, let me, let me follow up with you, and then I'll do that, so, if it's not on the agenda, so it wouldn't be appropriate to take action on tonight.
All right. Ms. Rowe?
I'm just asking if you would please approve item 7.2, that we can hire Ms. Rosie Audette.
Yes. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Member Ball?
Yes.
Member Solis?
Yes.
Member Collins?
Yes.
Member Inch?
Yes.
Member Langner?
Yes.
Member Vargas?
Yes.
President Marion?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is, thank you. Next item is 7.3. Member Inch, you pulled that item?
Yeah. I would like the minutes to be amended to more accurately reflect the public comments. I noticed that several of the teachers, they were lumped together, and then two COC members were listed out by name, and they've given a lot of respect in, in what they said. I felt like, when you use words like perceived, that you're undermining the comments of what the teachers were speaking to. I think they deserve the exact same treatment as the Josh Seibin and the other COC member that commented. Each one should get their own listing, and it should reflect what they said. And I, I think that, Brenda, you took notes, perhaps you could help with that?
So, I was, a comment?
Member Inch was mentioning to you, Ms. Collins, as far as you had notes regarding...
It's also videotaped, so, I don't know that notes are necessary.
Well, Dr. Rubio took the videotape home, and he was still not able to collect the names and, and the messages that each person had, had said correctly.
My, can I, can I comment?
Yes, go ahead.
It's just, my, to me, the most important thing is that us as a board, and what our takeaway is as, as a board and as board members, from the input that we received from, from all the teachers. So, that to me carries much, much more weight, whether we listen attentively, and it feels like we were all listening very attentively, and it feels like the message from the teachers seemed to resonate with all of us, at least that's my personal takeaway, it resonated with me. That to me is the most important thing. I, I'm not in the, I'm not interested in, in redlining the minutes, because again, to me, what most important, what's most important, again, is that we understand the concerns that the teachers voiced, and that we act upon them. That to me is the most important takeaway. Now, all that said, I would definitely ask John to see if he believes that there's something that he thinks that we should be adding to the comments based on what we heard.
You know, Ms. Tamery, just so everybody knows, usually does the minutes, and then she'll ask me to also look at them, and we tried to actually add some detail to be, you know, there are many issues that were brought up that evening, some of it was towards me, some of it was towards the board, some of it was about questions whether the board and I were culturally competent or not, some of it was a question of whether or not the city was a good partner or not. So, there were a lot of things that were brought up. I don't mind taking the respectful criticism, and it's always nice when it's respectful, and helpful when it's respectful, but I think we actually added more detail than usual on these, so if the board directs me as a, with the majority to go back and look at the minutes and bring them back in August, I'm happy to do that, but I think that these kind of portray the gist of the conversation, which again, is a summarization. We don't typically try to capture this in a court reporting kind of manner. Ms. Tamery wouldn't be able to, no offense to Ms. Tamery, but, and none as it's meant, but it would be too much for Ms. Tamery to record everything that was done, so I think this is a fair summary of what occurred.
Can I make one last comment?
Yes.
On the note of equity, the two COC members, who are white, were given a lot more verbiage, a lot more space, a lot more consideration in their comments than the group of people that came out and spoke. I'm also afraid of retaliation, so I'm very much into documentation. I would like to know the names of the people who spoke, and I'd like to be written down in a record that's accessible, because the word retaliation was mentioned.
I would suggest, if you want to know the names, that you look at the video, but again, if the majority of the board directs me to do something different, I'd be happy to look at that. I'll also add that, these are grouped by topic. The first paragraph is about the seven teachers and one classified former employee who came. The next one was about someone saying thank you to the district, the next one was about the COC, and the next one with Member Collins thanked everyone, so they were grouped by, they were just separated by topic, so.
I don't have any issue, I'm reading these public comments, and I think that they, it's a summary, and it's not meant to be verbatim or in excruciating detail. I find the summary sufficient, it corresponds with what I recall from the meeting, so I am, I believe these minutes are sufficient.
Wow.
I'll add one other comment pertaining to both the video and the meeting minutes. I work in, as a registered architect, and when we prepare plans, we have a specification, so I'm relating it to that, if, for maybe a lame analogy, but I'm thinking that specifications work with, they're basically compatible, they're basically work in conjunction, and nothing takes precedent over the other. So, between the two, there's two forms of information, a written meeting minutes, and then there's a video with an audio associated with that. With that being said, I think that suffices enough for public consumption and public use and public knowledge and transparency for actions that occur in this room. So, I believe we can do better, but as far as having to rehash previous minutes, we could go back further and do the same thing on a previous set of meeting minutes. I just assume we can do better, but at this time, I'd like to proceed forward and, and look for a better set of meeting minutes next time.
Public comment on 7.3?
Sure.
Appreciate it. Okay, I pay close attention, and, you know, I charged the writer of the minutes, which was the superintendent, with, you know, washing his hands, with hand wringing, of the wave, the wall of rebuke from teachers and educators on the 15th. And so now, I'm seeing here now, among the school board members, or at least some of you, further hand wringing. Now, school board member Langner says the minutes are not meant to be verbatim. Who asked for that? I'm not asking that they be verbatim, I'm asking that they accurately reflect in a summation, the reality. I'm not asking for a verbatim, I think, you know, that's, that's sort of insulting, really. You're discrediting my concern that the minutes aren't reflecting reality by saying that you, it's a straw man argument, and, you know, I don't appreciate that, that's not, that's not a nice thing to do. Okay, board member Inch made a good point. The, the COC members that were praising of the district and/or Mr. Rubio received a lot more credit in the minutes than the educators who were critical. Also, their names were used in the minutes. The teachers who were critical of Mr. Rubio principally, their names weren't used, so that's, that's an important thing. I mean, why, why would the district do that? Put that in the official record? Why not have it be the same? Have it be fair and equitable? Also, the two COC members that were praising of the district and Mr. Rubio, they received four sentences of minutes from Mr. Rubio, but nine people, nine educators and teachers received only one sentence. So, it's majorly skewed against those that are critical, and I don't appreciate that, it feels like a censoring happening. And I think the public record goes forward into the future without us, and I feel like, you know, this is like a Joseph Stalin moment, and why are we doing it? Why, I just think we should be, reflect reality, and it doesn't have to be verbatim, it just has to be above board in good faith, and that's not what we're getting here, and I think you should ask Mr. Rubio to rewrite the minutes, see if he can do a better job in August. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
It's getting exhausting. So, yeah, I take exception to the referral to excruciating detail. You know, we're talking about the basics here. You know, the minutes are a record of what happened, that's the purpose of minutes, that's why they exist. And to differ with Mr. Cruz, Cruz Vargas, I, I don't think the most important thing is what the board takes away, I think actually the most important thing is what the public takes away. The people are going to be sending their kids here, the teachers who potentially might work here, the teachers who already work here, that's the most important thing. So, you know, it's so hard for me to understand why you are resistant to doing the right thing. I just don't understand it. You know, name, where they worked, what grade, and why they, what they said, in one sentence, like, why is that a problem? And, and to infer in the minutes that the one complaint had to do with the partnership with the city, that was interesting. It was sort of a dim suggestion that they were blaming the city, and that really was troubling. So, I think honesty and transparency is your best policy here, and Mr. Rubio, I'm talking to you and to the board, and so I am also pleading with the board that they have Mr. Rubio go back and do an accurate set of minutes.
Any other discussion here on the board? Okay, if there's none, do I have a motion for item 7.3?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Member Ball?
Oh, I'm sorry.
They're just asking what the motion, I believe, is for.
Yeah, the motion is to accept 7.3.
A motion to approve the minutes as they're written.
Member Ball?
No.
Member Solis?
No.
Member Collins?
Yes.
Member Inch?
No.
Member Vargas?
I'm sorry.
Member Langner?
Yes.
Member Vargas?
Yes.
President Marion?
Yes. Motion carries four to one, or, four to three. Okay, the next item is under the discussion items. Dr. Rubio, can you introduce item 8.1?
Yes. We had hoped to have a representative from Scientific Adventures for Girls speak tonight and update the board on their program. They weren't able to make it, so we're going to have to pull it off the agenda.
All right.
So, we'll have them, we'll have them come back in August.
Thank you. It sounds like an interesting, I think we had a discussion last session, didn't we, on this?
I may have told you about the program, and certainly, it's one of the things I'm very proud of, that we've welcomed and expanded, and Rich Robbins has helped us expand this summer.
Okay. Good, good.
And as we consider it for further discussion, I would love to know how we can do, how we can expand that program, potentially to more grades?
Sure.
And, of course, a parallel program for boys as well, that would be interesting for us to explore.
Absolutely.
All right. We'll move on to item 8.2, and that's math and science teacher hiring incentives. Dr. Rubio?
Yes. You know, it's very, very difficult to find any teachers who teach, who have a single-subject math license or a single-subject science license, as it is for special education positions often. As you may recall, as a board, Wareham did donate $25,000 to the board in the past to allow us to offer hiring bonuses. This, however, was altered to ask the board to also, so that we have some language as a district where if we have teachers who are considering moving to a, from a multiple-subject position to taking on a single-subject position in the seventh and eighth grade, or multiple-subject in the seventh and eighth grade, to cover us for math and science, because it is really, it's really hard to find somebody. So, we have adapted this slightly, and I just wanted to make sure we had something backing up, potentially backing us up in writing regarding this attempt for the district to be more competitive, and I wanted to ask for your approval tonight of this.
Does anyone here on the board have any questions for Dr. Rubio pertaining to this item?
John, I know in the past that you had mentioned a different type of referral, or actually a referral bonus, as opposed to a signing bonus. I would love to get your thoughts as to why you believe this would be more effective.
I, I, I love that idea, so, just so everybody knows, Member Vargas, maybe about two months ago, had mentioned the idea of, and this is something I would want to sit down and talk to Mr. Davis about, the idea, unless we have, and I'm not recalling, the idea that a teacher who currently works in a school district refers, brings in, and their recommendation is successfully hired. And the idea, I think, if Mr. Vargas will correct me, I hope if I get it wrong, is that that teacher, so let's say Mr. Davis knows a, what, someone he thinks is a dynamite math teacher, and, or science teacher, unless, unless it's other, other content areas. If Mr. Davis refers them, they interview, and they're hired, then Mr. Davis, for example, would potentially get a referral bonus. I'm not sure what else to call it. I'm not sure what else to call it, but, so that's a great idea. I'm happy to either include that in here, if you so choose, or to bring it back. I'm not sure if Mr. Davis would want to first talk to me about the amounts of money, because it would potentially, potentially be negotiable if it becomes district money at some point.
I don't want to be, I don't want to be prescriptive as to the type of bonus that you recommend. My question was more about what do you think is the most effective bonus?
Oh, and why?
Which one do you think, if you believe this is more effective, then there's no need to talk about the referral. If you believe the referral bonus is more effective, then we should talk about what is the most effective way to attract teachers.
This would might be, in my opinion, be slightly more effective, because it allows us to cast the wide net, we advertise it, hiring bonus, it's more simple, it doesn't rely on us hoping a teacher happens to know somebody with a math credential, a science credential. I think, I think still it could be another way to approach it, but if you're asking me what's more effective, I think this probably is a little bit more effective.
I personally see those types of bonuses as very different and serving very different purposes, or at least different enough purposes, so I would be interested in learning more about a referral bonus as well. That's something that my law firm has, it's something that a lot of companies have, so would be interested in further discussion about that as well.
Ms. Inch, you had a question or a comment? Do you have any questions? Okay. Public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll go to final comments from the board. Any comments, questions amongst ourselves, discussion amongst ourselves?
So is this an action item?
Yeah, this is an action item.
An action is?
It's basically...
Microphone, speak into the microphone.
Can you be clear on the action?
Yes, the action is to basically ensure, it's, Dr. Rubio, this is an action item, isn't it?
It's an action item to approve this resolution.
Okay, I'm just looking at the summary here, and it doesn't state as...
As I understand it, to be honest, try to summarize it, any new math and science teacher will get a $5,000 sign and bonus. If an existing teacher moves to science and math for, was it ninth to 12th grade, gets a $3,000 bonus.
That's correct, and now if someone new to the district, if something doesn't work out or goes sideways, which, you know, can happen, then they would have to repay the bonus if they don't make it through their first year. That's on the second page of the resolution.
So the delivery of the bonus is one year after that person?
They get the bonus immediately, but there's a repayment clause on the second page that would, if they do not complete their first year, that they have to start paying that back.
It's on a prorated basis, correct?
Yes. Thank you, by the way.
Ms. Collins, does that answer, does it answer your question?
It does.
All right. Any other questions? If that's the case, do I hear a motion?
I'll move.
I will second it. Roll call, please.
Member Ball?
Yes.
Member Solis?
Yes.
Member Collins?
Yes.
Member Inch?
Yes.
Member Langer?
Yes.
Member Vargas?
Yes.
President Miriam?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Items eight point three is board policy, the suicide prevention is the first reading, so I believe it's for information only.
Superintendent Rubio, could you tell us how this policy came to be, how you created it, who you worked with?
Yes, I'm going to have Mr. Edwards come on up, please. So Mr. Kevin Edwards is our behavioral health manager, and he has a lot of different backgrounds and expertise, and Mr. Edwards will be happy to answer that question, I think.
Absolutely. Good evening, everybody. The policy came about, last year, the California Legislature passed a law stating that this coming school year, all school districts have to have a policy passed on suicide intervention, prevention, and postvention. As such, coming into the position, which I was hired November 1st, I saw that there was not a policy forthcoming, and so I worked with colleagues that I have throughout the Bay Area, specifically New Haven Unified. Sandy Vaughn is a school social worker, that was the principal editor on their policy. I also previously worked in the mental health department at Oakland Unified, used their policy as a template for an intervention, prevention, and postvention plan. I also did a web search for the California School Board Association and a couple other model policies, and so what you see before you is, in terms of the first reading of that policy, is kind of put together of the policies of local districts, as well as recommendations from the California School Board Association. I will say, just as a form of background for you, one of the functions of the wellness team is to do crisis response, and we had 31 incidences of crisis response last year. Of that 31, 15 were for suicide assessments. Now, if you, I did the rough math around our student enrollment, it represents about 2% of our student population had, had a need for a suicide assessment. And so I can safely say that we did not have a need to put anybody through a 51/50, but there certainly is a need for continuing education, not only of our staff, but also of our students, around what is suicide, how do we, how do we make inroads and impact it, how can we prevent it, how can adults be responsible to students? And students also need to have information around what is suicide, what are other options available, who are adults on campus with whom they can speak if there's a problem, other resources available to them, how to intervene to help a friend, what depression looks like, and how to get help for that. So this is the background with respect to this policy, and I'm willing to entertain if anybody has any questions.
Did you work with anyone, other people on campus when working on this? Our wellness director, our school counselor?
I did not. Our wellness director knew the fact that I was writing that, and prior to submitting it to Ms. Tamari for the board, I did forward it to Ms. Dunn as well, who is a wellness director.
Have you garnered any feedback from her yet on that?
Oh, she liked it.
And then as far as, and I know this is, this is not a touchy subject, but what do we have as far as policy for if a suicide were to happen? I don't see anything in the policy as far as how to address what's, how do we as a district work with that unfortunate incident?
You're absolutely right. There is no crisis response plan for that. In saying that, the last two days, I have been working on crafting a suicide, crafting this crisis response protocol and plan, which I'll be submitting for Mr. Rubio to review and for the board as well. So I have an extensive background, more than probably 20 years of doing crisis response work, and more than 10 years doing school-based crisis response, and had significant training around crisis response training, not only the incident command, but also how to work with suicide prevention and other types of crises at school.
So besides helping us with this policy, are you actually acting as a crisis, a member of a crisis team here?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, could you?
Aside from crafting this policy, are you actually working as the, a part of a wellness team here?
Yes, so I do do suicide assessments. Additionally, I have also done some ongoing work with a few students who presented and actually requested that I continue to see them on a check-in basis. I'll also say that as part of the wellness team, we have, our school psychologist Lauren LaPlante has been very active in at least setting some of the foundation work around crisis response that's been done in this district. I don't mean to imply that, certainly there's been a lot of work that's been done in wellness to meet students' need thus far, so I think there's been a good team and a good foundation from which to build on with respect to this policy moving forward.
You mentioned a separate, I believe it's a crisis response policy?
Yes.
And you feel that's most appropriately a separate policy?
Yes, it has to be, because there are several other crises that occur. There could be a shooting that occurs on campus, there could be somebody with a gun on crisis, there could be a sexual assault, there could be a rape, there could be a death of a staff person, or somebody's family member that has a huge impact on the school community. So I think we need to, not I think, I know, that the school needs to be ready for any one of these types of events.
That makes sense, thanks for the clarifying.
So if I may, you know, one other thing, I think one of the benefits of having this at a board level, because it puts a certain emphasis for the rest of the staff, that this is something that we are doing as a district, that this has importance, that this has visibility, and it spells out the responsibilities of everybody in terms of making sure that we are successful in addressing our student need. And I think that this will put forth a system that will help make us responsive, and so I actually look forward to that, I think it's something that's needed here, and it's just another system that will help keep our students safe and our staff feeling like they're doing a great job and are working in a place that are meeting student need.
Any other comments or questions for the guest?
A lot of good work here, I will save my comments for eight point four.
We will, we're proceeding through our questions for the guest.
I...
Yes?
Thirty minutes of training for the staff seems not very much, when I'm looking over this, I know this is a work in progress, and I appreciate all the work that you've put into it. I was just wondering if there was a way of getting more feedback and more participation from other people on campus, including students and teachers, but 30 minutes is a little hard to imagine that somebody could get enough training to deal.
Thank you for asking that question, let me clarify. I have been working with Crisis Response Services of Alameda County, who is probably one of the preeminent agencies that does crisis response, and does a lot of training around suicide awareness and suicide prevention. I've been working with their training coordinator, in addition to Jessica Good, to schedule a training for the staff, and we're doing an hour training. It was a recommendation of Crisis Support Services that they do an hour and a half. Ms. Good, given her training needs on the 17th and the 18th, and plus having teacher prep time, felt that an hour and a half was, just she couldn't fit it in, but I do think an hour is adequate. I will also say that in preparation for next year, we have scheduled on the books that Crisis Support Services is going to come out and do presentations to our students six through 12 around suicide awareness. We're also going to be doing during that first week in October, a training for our middle school staff as well, and that training, I'm sure, will be an hour to an hour and a half to meet those needs.
Thank you. I think my next question would be maybe addressed to Superintendent Rubio. As far as accessing these, I know some school districts have a parent handbook or a student handbook, or this information is available to people on the website. As a policy, I don't know that it would be that easy or accessible for the key informations to be. I would like to see accessibility.
That's a great question. In fact, if I may expand on your idea a little bit, it might be nice for us to have a slight link off the main site under our departments, Mr. Edwards, maybe you could follow it with me during the summer, where we could have this information and also have it translated in Spanish and Arabic, so that if a parent would like to read what we offer for suicide prevention and post-intervention, or, you know, the entire policy, maybe it would be just expand on your idea, have it translated as well. I appreciate that, it's a great idea.
If I may, that is the plan, and I don't know if you have all the documents, but the actually implementation work that I did, there are several documents that have been translated into Spanish. There will be a plan to do some parent training, my hope is to work with the PTO to do some parent training as well, and that's also within the implementation document that I created as well, to do that type of parent training. And I do believe that we do have to have access to this, I think you're absolutely right, and a link to the website as well as doing that parent training, I think will be crucial in supporting. You know, another piece of this is, is that, you know, we do parent contact whenever there is an assessment of this type, to make sure that parents know and they have the tools available to them to make sure that they can keep their child safe.
I've looked at other districts' policies, and there's one thing that comes up, if a parent guardian or adult that you would normally notify could possibly be problematic or not in the best interest of the student. I don't know if you have looked into that type of situation where it perhaps would instigate difficulty for the student themselves, or put them in harm?
Yeah, having done this type of work for many years in schools, I can tell you story upon story where that's occurred. In the implementation policy, there is a recommendation, if that does in fact happen, we're required to call CPS, because that's a neglect issue.
But that's after the fact, is there anything in here that considers assessing that before the fact?
Before what?
Before the, engaging the parent guardian who might possibly...
Well, if we do the assessment on campus, one of our first act is if we feel that the student is at threat, we're going to contact the parent at that point, and then if, in some way, the parent doesn't take it serious, or is not available, or does some act that shows that they're not working in the best interest of the child, then we need to call CPS as mandated reporters. Does that answer your question?
Sort of.
Sort of?
Yeah, but this is still a work in progress, and you guys are still...
Well, we are committed to work with our students and our family and our parent community to make sure that we have something that meets all of their needs and that students are safe, and that's the intent of this. And, you know, certainly, we are going to, I know last year, we certainly had an instance where we did work with the parent and had stayed late and had some conversations about what those next steps could be, and that's part of what our, what our practice is.
And I appreciate the addition, I don't know if it's new, of the LGBTQ section?
Absolutely.
And that was a part of my concern in notifying parents and making sure of the privacy if there is any jeopardy between parents, caregivers, and students.
There's a number of things that we do for that. There is a family, I forget the exact, a family health code that stipulates minors can consent at the age of 12 on for treatment, for a number of reasons, and we certainly, we certainly pursue that. I have, I have developed a minor informed consent form that spells out those laws, where we have the minor sign that says that they are consenting to mental health services and why, and what the risks and benefits of that are. So certainly, whatever I'm going to put forth is going to be in line with the ethical standards of my profession, that's going to be in line with my training and my licensure, and the point of this is not only to keep our, and I appreciate your questions for my next point, is that we need to make sure as a district that we do not, that we limit our liability and our exposure, and we make sure that we keep everybody safe. And so certainly, that's why, in seeing the fact that this was not put forth, I took it upon myself within my role to do that, and why I'm here and working with Dr. Rubio and also with Ms. Tamari to put this before you today.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome.
Dr. Rubio, is this required to have two readings?
I don't know if it's required, but we are, this is your first reading, we are bringing it back, I believe, we have time to bring it back, is my understanding.
Yes.
Correct? So it's coming back?
And that'll be before the next school year, correct?
Yes.
So the policy be in place by the time students hit the campus?
It's basically, yes, it'll come back to you at the first, August 9th, is the first board meeting in August.
And if something happened, let's say that there was something that occurred within your agenda in August that you couldn't get to it, we will still be implementing the practices in line with that policy at the beginning of the school year. That's not gonna, I mean, that's not gonna change, just because we need to make sure that we're meeting the students' needs.
All right, any other questions for the guest or from the board?
We appreciate the expertise and knowledge that you've been to the table, appreciate it.
My pleasure, it's a pleasure to work here and to be able to do this.
Thank you. Thank you. I do want to recommend that, you mentioned that there was an implementation plan, and unless it's eight point four, I would love for us to, for the board, to get our hands on that and being able to review that fine document, mainly because I have questions about outreach, which I will hold for eight point four again.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Since it was a first reading, we have public comment on this. Yeah, it's in the discussion.
Let me just really have a question. So I'm wondering how this, or if this intersects with the board's requirement under mandated reporting laws? Does this intersect at all, or is this completely different?
It does not intersect, to my knowledge, in terms of, well, it could, I guess, Mr. Edwards, in terms of mandated reporting, if an incident were to occur, or a student attempted to harm theirselves, we would need to report that. So maybe in that manner.
Well, okay, but I was also, you were speaking more generally too about any crisis that would come up, you know, whether it's sexual assault, or a gun at school, or, there were two alleged sexual assaults at this school very recently, both of which resulted in police reports. And I was curious to know if the school has a team in place when something like that happens, and then also if the training has been done as required by law, the mandated reporting. And so I understand that proof of that training is also required, and so I think the public would be well-served to see that proof. I know I and other members of the public would like to see it. So I guess it's a two-pronged question. It's like, do you train your staff and teachers under the mandated reporting law? And also, in the event of a crisis, like the two that were recently reported here, do you have a team of people and a protocol that kicks in when something like this is reported? So anything that you could, if you could shed some light on those two questions? Thank you.
May I answer that?
Sure.
Yes, please do.
Mr. Edwards, before you do, let me just say one thing, if I could. In terms of the recent events that you're referring to, there is, which you refer to as a crisis, as if, you know, I, the principal and the staff that are involved when any kind of allegation occurs, typically the principal of the school site, they have to, as mandated reporters, make a decision based on, I'm gonna get the wording incorrect here, but based on their experience and based on what is in front of them, whether or not they, there's something that, whether or not they have any suspicion. If they have any suspicion that something has occurred, they must report it. So, and then I will just add, if I may, Mr. Edwards, sorry, that staff is trained every year through videos that they have to watch through Keenan, and we did get that request actually in writing from another community member, so we're gathering those documents together so we can give that to that person. We can hand it, I hand you a copy as well, if you'd like. Sure.
So I just wanted to say, in terms of a point of clarity, you're referring to crises, and the document in the issue before the board is a suicide awareness, prevention, and intervention, and those two things are separate, okay? So with respect to mandated reporters, just to clarify what Dr. Rubio said, the law states that any person that has contact or works with children that has a reasonable suspicion, and reasonable suspicion is defined as any person viewing the same set of circumstances that comes to the same conclusion as the person making the report, then they need to then report to either police or to a child protective unit, okay? So that's the law around mandated reporting. So I know that our staff is trained. One of the things that I've spoken to Jessica Good about that is, I've done extensive training to school staff around mandated reporting. Obviously, I know the law. And I have spoke with Ms. Good, and we'll talk with the new principals coming in, about me doing a more in-depth training around mandated reporting and what that is, okay?
And I'll add one thing, sorry. And just if it helps, I don't know if it helps, but for your knowledge, because I know you've had some questions recently, as others have about the two recent incidents, there was no reasonable suspicion in either of those events. I don't know if that helps or not, but I wanted you to know.
Thank you. I was going to speak to that as well, because I was involved with one of that, and there was, there was not. But I can assure you that with part of our wellness team and the training that we do, we are available, and we are called, and we work on all of those in a way that makes sure that that student need is met, whether it's mandated reporting, whether it's ongoing counseling, and whether it's referrals to other outside sources that can support students. Thank you.
All right. And that was the first reading for the suicide prevention policy, board policy. Item eight point four is also informational and first reading of an item regarding administrative regulation, suicide prevention.
Mr. Edwards, is there anything you want to add about the admin regulations that you have here in eight point four that go along with this? Have you basically covered it all together? Okay. And board members, if you have questions now, or if you, again, this'll, we'll have this sent to you again over the next month, so you can look at it again.
Member Cruz had...
I was patiently waiting for this. So the second document on eight point four, Suicide Prevention Intervention and Post- prevention Policy, that's the document I'm looking at. My general comment is about awareness and our, and the ways in which we increase awareness of the existence of these programs, and how we disseminate and do some outreach, not just to students, but to parents as well. I would very much recommend that we go beyond what we have written in this policy, that we take a very active approach. Hopefully, we can leverage the outreach, parent outreach coordinator, and make sure that that role is involved in this process. I just say that because, as I read the policy, it talks about two brochures being available. So I very much recommend that we go beyond that, or, first of all, that we, that we make sure that those brochures are distributed and not just, you know, sitting in an office. That's one thing. But then also, just, I very much appreciate your point about working with the PTO to make sure that parents are trained as well, and that we have a session, we'd have to pitch in for coffee or doughnuts so that more parents come, and that we make them aware that these programs exist, and that we bring those parents in, and they know what, all the good stuff that's going on. So that's my comment on eight point four.
Mr. Edwards, and maybe, I don't know if you have any ideas you want to share now with the board in terms of getting this information out? We talked about the website, but is there anything else you think we should do? Or do you want, you have to come, if you do, you have to come to the mic, because the video won't catch you.
I think the point in terms of outreach is well-taken, and I mentioned about working with the PTO and certainly with Erica Santana. Done some work with her already with respect to working with a parent around a suicide intervention, and will continue to do so. I think your point is well-taken. I look forward to you looking at the implementation document that's available. I think there is some wording that really talks about that level of outreach. And I can assure you that that will, in fact, occur, and we'll make sure that that happens. And I agree with you. I think the need around this and the impetus is so big that a brochure sitting on a table somewhere is not doing anybody any good. And, I mean, I got into this work to work with families and to be effective.
I appreciate that. Go back. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Edwards, you mentioned an implementation policy. Is that one of the documents we have available?
I believe so, yes. Ms. Tamarie, did you, yes, okay, I thought so. Yeah, because she and I talked about that, yes.
It's right after the AR.
Okay. Thank, just wanted to make sure I was looking at the correct document. Thank you.
Yeah, it's quite large. And, you know, certainly, any, you know, feedback that you have, anything that I can do to make that better, I certainly look forward to that. I think we need to do these things in community, and this is just a first reading and a first round, and so I look forward to hearing your feedback. Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Edwards. I know you mentioned the, kind of the brochure incident. How, how does this come into the classroom? Does this training from staff go into the classroom? How is that implemented? Or is it implemented...
Yeah. Crisis Support Services of Alameda County has a program that's very well-received. They've been doing it for years. It's called Teens for Life.
Okay.
And the elements within that Teens for Life program fit perfectly with what the California Assembly dictated around a student awareness.
So basically, it's taught in the classroom?
It will be taught, it will be taught in the classroom. As I said, we have, the first week of October is a date for those, for those trainings to occur, and that's from grades six through twelve.
Great.
Okay?
All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. If you would like a copy of that training for you to review, I can certainly get one. I don't, I'm assuming that they will give me a copy of it. I don't even want to say I can get, but, you know, if it's not copyrighted or anything like that, if you want to look at it, or a summation of it.
Do you want to bring it next for the second reading?
I'm sorry?
I mean, is that possible, if we bring that for the second reading, just...
In August?
Yeah, when we have our second reading on this. And just bring that, and it can be an attachment, and we can reference it, and that way we have the ability to reference it.
Yeah. I will talk with, I will talk with my contact at Suicide, you know, Crisis Support Services, and if there's a challenge, I'll certainly communicate that with Dr. Rubio.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Just to echo back for John, we, the board asked for, including two documents in the second reading. One was the implementation plan, the second one was a copy of the material that actually makes it to the classroom, like actual training material.
Thank you.
Just for us, as an attachment, basically.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions for our guest, the board? If not, do we have any public comment?
Just a quick question, looking through, quickly looking through the material here. I'm not seeing anything about the cyberbullying and information. Maybe I'm missing it, but I know that's a huge problem now, and there's been multiple suicides around young people being bullied through various means with the cyber. And I'm just wondering about that, how that's being addressed.
So specifically, issues around cyberbullying and bullying would be on the, and I paused because it would be on the outside of this document. What is internal to it is if it comes to a point where somebody is threatening suicide, then there is provisions to address that, okay? So I do, I mean, I think the threat of bullying, and certainly, we've seen a lot of that happening, and we've seen a lot of kids who are threatening suicide because of that, and I think that's something that we also need to look at in terms of supporting and intervening around bullying, so that we can make sure that that doesn't occur within our school community. If it does come to the point where our students are feeling so impacted that they, the only option they feel is available to them is to kill themselves, we do have the capacity within that to intervene. Okay? Yes.
Any other public comment? With none, any discussion amongst the board regarding this item? This is in, just a discussion item for right now, first reading. All right. If there is none, we will move on to the next item. That is item eight point five. It's approval for budget for 2017, 2018. Good evening.
Dr. Rubio? Oh, thank you. We have Ms. Dora Su here to help us with any questions or additional questions the board may have since the last presentation. Ms. Dora Su, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Basically, there is no change on the budget information from the first reading to the second reading. So the staff's still recommending the board to adopt the positive certification of the 17, 18 adopted budget.
I have no questions.
Okay.
Given that nothing changed. Thank you, Dora.
Wow.
Well, hold on. Everybody stop. Can we stop the meeting for a second?
I exhausted all my questions in the last meeting, so nothing changed. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
Does anybody else have questions for Ms. Dora Su? There is one, I think, it's loading. It was a first reading on one of the slides, and since this is the second reading, do you want to update that, or should it just rely on what was presented previously?
So you do have a question on one of the slides?
Yeah, I think it's titled First Interim.
Your question's just about the title, right?
Yeah, just the title. If this becomes an accepted document, should it be updated?
Oh, you mean on the slide?
Yeah.
You want it updated to...
Second reading?
Second reading?
Second reading.
Okay.
Somehow, because if there's no changes, then there is no changes, but I, this more, this more may just...
All right. I can do that. On the second page of the slide, where it said first reading, it will be second reading.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions for Ms. Dora Su?
So I don't have a question, but I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
She's always keeping the money right, and she keeps it straight, and she keeps everything on point, and it's not easy. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, open for public, if there's no other comments or questions for Ms. Dora Su, open for public comment? Okay? None? Well, public comment, and if there is none, we'll wait for Ms. Hinch. Shall we take a quick recess, waiting for her?
I think it's fine. You want to try a three-minute recess?
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that.
Okay, great. You caught us off-guard there, remember? No questions. No questions.
Any further clarification questions for Dr. Rubio, since he's the stand-in for?
And we're looking to approve this today, tonight? That's what the motion is?
No, we're going to do a public comment after this.
No, I mean, but the goal is to.
It is a motion item. Any other questions? If not, it's public comment time. Item 8.6. If there is none, we'll move to final discussion between, amongst the board. Deliberations, anything? Okay, we'll move into a, do I hear a motion for accepting item 8.6, approval for Local Control Accountability Plan?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it. Roll call, please.
Member Ball?
Yes.
Member Solis?
Yes.
Member Collins?
Yes.
Member Hinch?
Yes.
Member Langner?
Yes.
Member Vargas?
Yes.
President Miriam?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Now onto item nine, it's calendar review. Dr. Rubio, can you give us a brief summary on this?
Sure, I'm very happy to say that the board gets a little bit of rest between now and August. And so we, I know Ms. Tamer is coordinating one July meeting regarding my evaluation, but other than that, we are back into our regular board meetings in August. And as I've shared in the past, just share since we have some people here and we're on video, that we are endeavoring still to bring back the topic of the ECCO audit as an August topic with everyone we can get into the room for the board to have that information.
Could you go back to the special meeting? What's the status of that? Do we have a tentative date?
July 27th, and I've had affirmative responses from four, and there's still a member who hasn't responded.
Would it be possible to sort of firm that date up in the next week or so, and let us know one way or the other?
Sure, maybe I'll ask.
We can firm that now, I was the one.
Oh, oh, is that okay? I wasn't going to do it publicly, I didn't know who it was. Is that a workable date? Yes.
27 works. Put that on the calendar.
All right, so Thursday evening, July 27th, the board will meet in closed session. Is it a closed session? Closed session regarding, setting our goals for the new year in regard to our goals and my evaluation as superintendent for the upcoming school year.
And then in preparation for that, John, would you mind forwarding your last evaluation and your contract as well, so that we have enough time for us to view and comment? Appreciate it.
And then are we going to solidify the type of committee?
I think that's going to be dictated.
That's a great question. I know typically it's the first Thursday, but I haven't heard back yet unless Ms. Tamer knows what is. The board takes off July, the city council doesn't usually meet in August. So I last left off with Mr. Jimenez asking if it was going to occur in September or August, and I'm not sure if we've, I don't think we've got any confirmation.
I see it on Harris, August 3rd, is that not?
Number three is an update on average daily attendance, ADA, and how it affects funding. Item four is how to promote more communication between students and the board. Number five is request for information regarding 2010, 2011 technology hardware inventory and monitoring. Number six is ECCO update, and number seven, CIC update. Comments on that or questions?
Well, I'd like to comment, it doesn't seem to be short, it just seems to be growing. We don't seem to be getting a lot of these things put away. I know that we've had some long board meetings.
I think one in particular was the audit, and that's now become an action item by Dr. Rubio. And not to say that we haven't attempted anything, but you're right about that, as far as that list seems to be stagnant, or if not growing.
We knocked out a few of Member Cruz's previous ones, I thought, but yes, it's taking us a while to get all of these requests in, so it's kind of, yeah.
ADA, that's like a five-minute update. I don't think that that's a really lengthy or in-depth item. So I would like to just, if we could move that up, it's very short. I just want our numbers, our past numbers, and a little bit of an explanation for the rest of board members as to, and elaborate on what you've said at other board meetings, of why you were having trouble needing to teach teachers to take attendance, that type of thing.
And Dr. Rubio, you'll have new numbers when we adjourn, or when you convene for the next board meeting pertaining to enrollment, will you?
We might, it depends on.
Is that the cusp?
Yeah, it's on the cusp, we could, I'll be happy to share any kind of enrollment numbers that we have. But, uh, Member Hinch, I missed the last thing you said. Did you, I think you said something about my reference in the past regarding some challenges, making sure we're doing everything we're supposed to do regarding attendance, would you like me to include that?
Correct.
Thank you, okay.
And I had also mentioned after the last equity policy discussion, that I don't know if we have existing policies on gender, gender identity, sexual identity. I would like to start investigating having policies on that.
Okay.
Sexual orientation, gender of gender identity, and I missed the last, was it sexual identity or sexual orientation?
Yeah.
So can we bring back to the board the list of things that were problematic? And a few meetings ago, it was itemized list of what needed to be done and where they were in doing it.
You're referring to attendance?
So referring to the architects and the things that's wrong with the building.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're referring to something else, you're referring to the ongoing warranty list.
Right, so to make sure that everything will be completed before the warranty runs out.
Yes, would you like to see that list again?
Yes, if we can have updated list.
Sure.
And Dr. Rubio, you may want to just include that, I might not want to speak over that, but you may want to include that in the ECCO update, because that would dovetail nicely with where we are with everything as far as closeout, budget, what's owed. So I think that would help put everything together in one discussion.
Sounds great, okay.
And we don't add to the list.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Just as a reminder to President Rubio and, I'm sorry.
I like the way that sounds.
President Miriam and Dr. Rubio. No. We, I think the board had indicated a desire to see that document maybe every six weeks or so, to make sure that we're staying on top of those items, just as a reminder.
I appreciate that. You're referring to the same warranty list?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would like to add, I would like for us to discuss adding three items. And then I echo the sentiment of that the list seems to be growing. So hopefully we can tackle some of those in the near future. The first one is a recent takeaway, I believe that we had spoken about reviewing and trying to identify whether there's any place to enhance our, I believe it was our sexual harassment policies. I would love for us to make that part of a upcoming agenda of more board members, believe, and have appetite for that.
Was that one of the three? I thought you said three.
Yes, but I would love to go item by item.
Okay. And I think, I think that I actually had, I appreciate the reminder. I believe I had shared with the board that we would bring that back already, so you may not need anyone else. But unless the board wants to talk about it, I'm happy to bring that back, and I appreciate the reminder.
I thought, I was going to say that, I believe we'd already discussed that, so I support that idea.
And I bring it up because it was not part of the future agenda item, so just want to make sure that we have, have an eye on that. The second one is follow-ups from earlier in the meeting to make sure that we talk about policy on how we summarize the contents, whether the comments, sorry, public comments, to see whether we want to add name, title, or any other suggestions that we might have. Would love for us to bring that back, and if it's a policy matter, I would love to get your thoughts to see whether we can, if other people agree, that we can add it to a future agenda item.
Yeah, the numbers that he added, three?
Number two. I mean, that's fine, I, Member Cruz, I said earlier that I'd be happy to bring back some information. I think Member Hinch, I trust her assessment, I thought I would just look at neighboring districts as well. I've never looked to see how other districts post their personnel actions, but I was going to bring it in.
I believe we're talking about two separate things right now. So, Member Vargas, you're talking about the minutes?
Yeah, the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
How we summarize the public comments.
Oh, I apologize, I'm sorry.
That was number three.
I got onto number three?
Yes.
Is that what I was saying?
You have ESP.
Sorry, sorry. Okay, all right, number, got it. So you're asking the board, you're asking the rest of the board, would they like to have this policy of how we deal with minutes come back as a board discussion item, or?
Yep.
It's up to you as a board.
Is it something that we want to discuss at the board, is it something that we want to leave to the, is it generally policy that the board has to define? Or is it something that we leave to the discretion of the superintendent?
I'm under the assumption that we could probably, just based on this discussion this evening, we could probably have a better effort at meeting minutes, and because it's a response to concerns within the community. Just apply it in that fashion, that would be my take on that. And then rather than becoming another agenda item, see how we progress with that. And if it sees that there's no movement on that, then it becomes, I mean, that would be one way to work around it, rather than making it an official edict to proceed with.
I am all for that, absolutely all for that. Then my specific recommendation is that we add the names of everybody that makes a public comment to the minutes.
Now, mind you, sometimes public members will not state their names. Just letting that out.
To the extent it's clear in the video, or it's, to the extent they state their name, that seems reasonable.
And then a similar point to number three, very specifically on terminations and resignations, that I'd recommend that we add the name and the grade to the title as well, assuming that it's within, not within our reach, but that we're allowed to do that. Okay.
All right, any others? All right, let's move on to, this is under the calendar review. And just for sake of protocol and respect for the meeting, I'm going to move on to item 10.
I'm sorry, for future agenda items. I don't know how to add this to, but there's not been a lot of transparency, which I'd asked for when we created the policy for adding items to the agenda. I had asked that there be transparency for what people were asking for agenda items and what responses they got. Now, I realize there are some issues with the Brown Act and not wanting people to have a chain of conversation, but I would like to solve that problem with some sort of solution that would allow everyone to have the same amount of information equally about what was happening with the agenda, what requests were being made, what requests were being denied, and on what basis. And I understand we can't have a conversation, but I feel that each board member should have the same information.
I think that's fine. What we just need to make sure we do, you're right, it is a real issue. If their email conversations go into the group, and because you're not supposed to, as the board, as you know, be involved in conversation outside of the public arena, so.
But there are solutions to that.
Yes, I think you're right. So I think what we should do, I think the board asked me, I believe, that if a member of the public requests an item and it's not coming to the board, I believe you asked me to make sure I let that, we let them know, which we've done. And I may have missed it, you may have told me, I don't recall. But it's actually, you bringing it up is making me think more about this, Member Hinch, that we should also make sure we send a separate notice to you as the board. Here are some additional items that were requested, here's the status based on my conversation with the board president or whichever board members I talked to, so we can add that, absolutely.
I would double-check with council on that, because I think that's, because that's, I think, a discussion that's been made in the public.
I'll ask, I'll double-check.
Because I think when we went through our board policy pertaining to agenda items, I think it was clearly defined how it gets introduced. Am I reading it wrong or understanding it incorrectly? But I think that's, we set, we updated our policy pertaining to that. So I think the protocol or the means to do that is there and it's established.
No, I think you're right, I think Member Hinch is just pointing out something that I think is okay, and I can double-check against our policy. I think what we're saying is, if we get a request from the public, and we, in our planning, we don't bring it to the very next meeting, we want to let them know. But Member Hinch is also pointing out that how will you know as a board? Some of you may know, one or two of you may know if you did the planning with me, but the rest of you might not know, if I understand Member Hinch correctly. So all I'm suggesting is we send a separate notice to you, one way that you should not reply to, that says, here's some requests this week, or one request, and here is what's coming or not, if it's not coming, to let you know. I think, have I understood you correctly?
Yes, it's a one-way communication that enables everybody to have the same amount of information.
Got it, we can make sure we add that, I just need to, Lisa and I will make sure that happens.
All right. Not at this time, not at this time. Let's move on to item 10, which is board reports and announcements.
Well, I'd like to, oh, go ahead. I missed last time, I'd like to announce that we all did receive a letter from the PTO. And I did go to a PTO meeting in between, after the last board meeting. And the letter from the PTO, as you guys all know, did voice their concern with the selection process for the principals. I just wanted to make sure that the PTO knew that we all did receive that letter, and I, for one, did take it very seriously. And that was something that prompted me to go to the PTO meeting where I can heard some concerns about that process and the lack of communication around the process.
We're very close to PTO, we have been aware of their comments for many months. And I, there's true action for us as a board to acknowledge that there is room for improvement. I think that's the first step for us as a board to realize that there's this great room for improvement. And once that happens, I think we'll be able to move on an action plan much, much more quickly. That's my thought on that. And then the second thought is, I have, I would like to relay a message from my daughter for Science for Girls. She loves it, she attended, she's been attending all this semester. There was a coding camp that happened last week. She is a better coder than I am now. I was never a coder, but she's definitely better than me. So just to reiterate, as we look at discussing Science for Girls for the future agenda items, we'd very much love to include ways in which we can expand those programs. And I'm going to sound like a broken record, but I think. And I'm going to sound like a broken record, but I think there's great opportunity for us to increase the outreach of those programs. There were empty seats that I think we would all benefit if those seats would be filled with more students in all those good programs.
Other?
I'd just like to say thank you to all the board members and Dr. Rubio and Ms. Tamery, the student members, for the last, I guess, six or eight months since we all came together, and congratulate everyone on finishing up the school year, working hard, and look forward to working even harder next year and addressing some of the areas that we have and will identify for improvement going forward. So, thank you, everyone.
So, a couple things. I did attend Alameda County School Board Association's networking luau. It was a very nice event. It was, they were very happy that someone from Emeryville came, and I just want to encourage us all to at least try to rotate the events throughout Alameda County, and so we can have representation for Emeryville. And I want to congratulate our student representatives. Welcome to the class of 2018. So our ladies are now seniors, and they're going to do their last leg with Emory this year. I'm very proud of you, ladies, and congratulations.
You both will be joining us again next year, I hope. All right.
All right. Any other announcements? If not, we will adjourn to closed session.